Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting in order at this time, please. Turn all cell phones, electronic devices to off or vibrate. Mr. Morris, would you please lead us in our prayer and our pledge of allegiance?
Good morning, thanks for this day and the blessings we receive from it. Lord, the little rain that you've sent, and pray that you would send more. As we do the conductive business of the town of Bounder Business, the wind, wisdom, and the knowledge that we might do the things that would benefit the citizens of this town in the best and way. Lord, we thank you so much for your love and grace. I pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I salute your allegiance to the reply of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is Spanish, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right, you can approve of the minutes of the June 18, 2018 meeting. Everybody take time to read.
I didn't see any, didn't need to be changed. Make a, what we approved.
Yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, visitors who are not on the regular agenda will be given the opportunity to address the council on any subject at this time. Is anyone present not on the agenda? Nobody jumping up and down as a visitor? All right. All right, City Council may consider, discuss, or take action on request to close 12th Street between Avenue E and Willowbrook Edition. You should have that information as well as a map in your packet. And what is this, a place that's behind Jonathan North's house or right on that area?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, if there any.
Actually, that has not been used in a long, long while.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's not even, it's on the map, but it's not even.
It's on the road there. It's really, chronically out there. Actually, nobody would have known it there. That's all.
Okay. Okay. So they bought all the lots?
Yeah.
All right, that had been stated, is, this hasn't even been used. It's basically on the map, but we haven't used it. It hasn't been maintained very clearly. We don't have any service in it? No utilities? No.
They're in front of them.
They're in front?
What does that have?
E, E?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Well, that piece of line goes down beside that whole place, that side has been done here on that. Doesn't matter. Or we just take the line across.
Yeah, that's backed over on, that's on, it's what, what is supposed to be 12th Street? It's where this Raver Edition, where it's pink, on Matthew, that's where that other line is.
Okay.
Yeah, this 12th Street, which isn't there. There's nothing in here.
Well, it's like, send an open road.
No.
It's not paid for.
Yeah. It would be, it would be. Yeah. I'm living another time in heaven.
It's purely John.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
We bet.
Okay.
In that pink area, I want to include it. When the first, that 12th, right there, I don't think it uses.
Well, this is the, when you close it, it goes through the middle to that side, and this.
Yeah.
Each side.
I bet all of this is.
Yeah. The word "damn" you.
Yeah.
And then go, use it, 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 back. I don't, I don't, maybe not, oh, maybe, maybe it's due to that. Is this something somebody asked, they had a question?
Yeah.
Do you have anything else concerning the public side?
Yes. This, this part of the property here, it doesn't like settle, and the ones that have been passing by, and we've already left it, you chose, you can throw it down.
Any reason not to do it?
Yeah, usually just, as long as nobody complains about it, or you notify, or tell on property, or people around it.
I would thank you for notifying these people over here, and these people.
And that other thing. His is up.
No, his is.
He doesn't, he doesn't have the.
I don't know who has that house that, you know, that faces Avenue E.
Behind.
That's that house that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the fourth building. They couldn't look at any of them for the third week.
Yeah. And I, I don't know how much property they own behind it.
All the way back, I don't know, that big block?
All the way to, it's on another property called, what's it?
Did Steve have any recommendations on this part?
No. Randy, Rick, where is that Rick Sonnenberg?
Yeah, where that blue, that big blue?
Yeah. Oh, this would be Sonnenberg, about, about, he owns all that back lot.
Yeah.
Oh, well, as far as I know, he does.
Yeah, that young one, 11, 13.
Oh, I, I know, it's a person.
Yeah.
And that next property is what, what I call, is Elsie property.
Right. And then they also go from, brother to the back of David Cox.
Yeah, yes. All right, aye, yes or no?
That's the only. I'm sure last time, I hope we didn't contact the people around.
Oh, I understand. I'll get with that.
I would recommend that here, it's on these signs, notify property owners, then certain individuals.
You do?
Table this, do that, and then move forward. How much motion to table this, so notify the surrounding property owners?
Second.
Oh, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, City Council may consider, discuss, or take action on quarterly tourism. Report from Ms. Tammy Burke.
You guys should have this little brief report here for work. And that is the second quarter, that's from April, May, and June. And we received our first quarter hotel, motel tax check in that quarter also. The only change that I have, the last line, it says total income of April, May, June, 2018. I'd like to change that version a little bit, so it's not confusing. That's the balance, that is the year-to-date balance. That's what we're sitting at today. That way it doesn't look like that's what we made between April and June. After I top that out and write it, I can see without, because of some confusion. You guys have any questions and comments?
What's the status of the those up here?
The message boards, they should be here in the next week or two. They should, pretty quick.
Kind of message board, what are those?
These are the ones, I came in front of councils a few months ago, the, I can't remember how big they are now, but they're the big signs that will have a location map in on them, and will have a Bounder brochures on there, and then there's a spot down at the bottom to put five different, so, of the flyers, basically, so we can change it up. And we'll have places for people that are, that come in from out of town, like the after hours, or on weekends and stuff, when the offices are open, that they can get information about Bounder and kind of fit a little land, where all of our landmarks are, and what they're, kind of, and we're gonna have two of them. One, we're gonna put in the park, and the second one, I'm still working on, but I think we're probably gonna put it on the courthouse line, as suggested, where that old one is to replace that, that old eyesore. But they will be backlit, they will have LED lighting on, so they'll be lit at night.
That's why I was gonna ask if you'd touch base with them and see.
Yes, I, I, we, we've, we've, we've been playing from tag, but we, I think that that's probably what's gonna happen, we'll just replace that old one, I don't know, there won't be one gone, that this one will be much more attractive.
No doubt, but the wiring's there and everything, that's why, if you touch base with them, make sure.
Lot. And that's, that's been our only one purchase this year, for those two signs. We are looking at some things to do tourism-wise, and looking for suggestions to kind of enhance some tourism. I know we're not the hot spot, which, but, you know, some things that people can do while they're here, whether it's enhancements in the park, or some other things, so we're always up for suggestions and ideas, and what, what would you do with that?
Well, that's where we'll get to be, a hot spot.
That's right.
Get out, get out. Start that and try and sell.
Any other questions concerning Tammy? Thank you, ma'am. All right, City Council may consider, discuss, or take action on request from David Coward to port with the city for the sidewalk repairs on the corner of, and this will be North Line and Heights Avenue, on the North Line street side, directly across from the bank. This is the build, the LTNT building, where they're doing their upgrades and stuff with the home help. And so what he wanted to do is request, basically, for us to tear off the concrete that's along that sidewalk, that's in bad repair. And last I talked, which was last year, he has a design of doing sitting area with trees and shrubbery and different things, but all we're doing is, we're helping him take it out, and then he's gonna have contractors come in and do the concrete and lay it, etc., at his. So we're basically partnering to take it out and get it prepared for them to come in. He wanted that to come into council, so we'd at least be aware of it, because he had asked about it last year, invited him to talk about it, so we didn't ever bring it to council, so it's hard to go first.
So, that's projected, so.
Basically, labor and field, driver, if you're the minimum, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be what his is.
Okay. Maybe there's been a lot of improvement right there, right?
Oh, yeah. But he had talked about that a year or so ago, and so it's being presented to council, so they're aware of it, but that was something that he asked about.
Is there anybody down that sidewalk, underneath it, that went into, to, to, to the water, if you're aware of?
It's good, right? In the front.
Was it Frayd or?
Yeah, well, that's.
And that's a part of those streets, you know, the side, yeah. That's the state side.
The state side's the issue.
Yeah. States, states from his corner of his building forward, we're at the back.
Right. I just didn't know what might be.
As far as I know, this is only from the front ATT to the alleyway, or is it, I don't know, he got behind that other building as well.
The way I understand it is from his corner to the alley.
Okay.
I don't think he's gonna do cheap police.
Yeah.
Back bedroom, is where he's gonna park his vehicle.
Right.
That's it, yeah.
Anybody have any concerns or issues about that?
I'm not, it's okay.
Sir?
I think it'll be fine.
Very inappropriate, why do you?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yes, it is.
I'd like to motion to accept this partnership with David, to partnership.
Yes, yes.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. I had so much paperwork.
No.
No, I think so. I had so much, I figured I missed it. All right, there are no building permits, so we will skip agenda item eight and move on to agenda item nine. Give to the police activity monthly report from Chief Stanley Morris.
For the month of June, we had total arrests, five accidents, 348 calls for service, 57 citations, and a little over 5200 in court files.
Not really, I'm excited, not. Not really excited, Paul, answer your question. Just said 57 or 52?
57 citations.
Okay. Court files, I thought I heard 5700, might have 52, so.
Oh, 5200, if. 57 citations, 5300.
Okay. Court files. That's damn. And we used to get a report on officers, as far as mileage per officer, and as far as citations, traffic, per officer? Yeah. We were getting that for a while, what happened, I can break that down again if you want to. Okay. Yes, please. And I'll let you drive there as well. Right. Between each unit. Right. But that doesn't tell us who, who is who. Yeah. What officer's what.
So that unit number's the car number?
Yeah. Yeah, basically, you don't do the three where the unit is, and that's 101, 202, 104, 106, 810.
Well.
So that is the three hundred vehicles.
Is animal control one of those units?
No, I do not. I haven't, I can't go on with this. I haven't.
I, I've asked for it before.
Okay.
Several months ago.
Okay.
Does she have a unit number?
Yes.
Well, I, I don't know if she has the unit number or not.
Okay. I mean, she has her own unit, I only have one, so, it's one. Good.
Oh, it's Mars.
I didn't know if you rolled over into 113.
I was wondering that, I'm worried.
That may have been, it may be 111. That's her badge number. I don't know if it's the same as the unit number or not. All right. Any other questions for service? Comments? No? Everything's good? Thank you, sir, appreciate you.
All right, here's CNN history advice, you can report, please. I don't know if y'all noticed on the website or not, but we have started a stage one water rationing, it's a mild report. The lake level dropped to 16, 66.0 feet, with these little rains we've been getting, depending on where you're at, it may come up to 10 foot, and it goes back down to 10 foot, so, anyway, it's, from 10 o'clock to 4 o'clock, there's no water in the lake. Any watering that you do is on a voluntary basis, and we recommend that you go buy the watering calendar that's available here at City Hall. It's not mandatory, it's just a voluntary type of. We don't hit stage two, I think, until we get to an elevation of 1662, which is four more feet, so hopefully this summer, we won't reach that. Probably next summer, if we don't get any rain in the 20th of July. Talked with Scott this morning, his plans are to start June 24th. He should have all his guys off of vacation by then, and equipment there, and ready to go. If we keep getting these little showers like we've been getting, that's gonna delay it, but hopefully, we can get it done. Looks like the next 10, 12 days is gonna be dry, after today, tomorrow, around the end. Water department, we've got a couple of projects going for them on the 8th Street and Merle Avenue. They lay a new line down 8th Street, about two years ago, on the west side of 8th Street. They never tied it in, but we're gonna tie that 8th Street line in tomorrow, it's a little big loop. We're gonna give it some water, some water, about rusty, dirty water in one block, just one block area, and it's hard to get that line in flush, when you don't have a flush well on the end of it, so, I'm so glad to take care of that and get it, get it looped.
Are they gonna be looping for the lot?
No. Not right now. Look at, future, we're gonna tap off Merle and bring all that to Park Avenue. For the time being, we're just gonna loop that 8th Street line in Merle Avenue. Also, on Merle Avenue, 29th Street and 10th Street, we're gonna get that line in. It's gonna give it some problems, here of Lake, right here, so, we'll get that taken care of, either way. Other than that, that's about it.
So Randy, you know, but it has a swimming pool, under voluntary compliance, if you feel like taking, feel like taking, but thank you.
Yes, sir.
We're, we're not in a crisis situation. You understand.
Yeah, I understand, right, but not in a crisis situation, and to turn down the revenue when you have evaporation in it, that's not, doesn't make sense. Right. All right, anything else? All right, do you request a future agenda from City Council? Y'all have anything else? Well, right, Randy Bonita, rather than doing the budget workshop this evening, I requested that we shoot for next Monday, the 16th, for the budget workshop. Is that gonna affect anybody's schedule? And a few minutes? No?
I've got a lot of stuff, not building, I'm.
That, you go. Good. Okay, 5:30, okay. All right, so budget workshop, next Monday, 16, 5:30. If there's anything else, if we need to take care of that time, I guess we'll have to. All right, Bounder City Council, Shemene Executive Sessions, authorized by Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation of city attorney, application of Christopher Lee to operate a gaming, city's gaming ordinance, investigation of local gaming establishments in the city. We just closed the executive session, we're on agenda item 13, action from executive session, we're gonna go down to agenda item B. City Council may consider or take action on the, on the application of Christopher Lee to operate a gaming at 111 South 8th Street in Valerian. And based on the information, gentlemen, that we've had, and, was it Joey?
Yes.
Okay. You said to contact Police Department in San Angelo, did you not, when we spoke to person, once before?
Right.
And they basically instructed us that your gaming site with those others were shut down, and asked to cease and desist for criminal activities at the establishments and the others, and that's the information that we found, and that's what we're based on, as far as the information on the application, so therefore, because of that information, we're denying the application for the business at 111 South 8th.
We need to have a motion. We need to have a motion.
Okay.
For, for what reason? Because they shut down everybody in San Angelo?
Everybody that's operating illegal, when you can, a motion is to have been discussed.
Technically, no. We have been open for five years, until a new chief came in, decided to say, we're shutting everything down. And then when it, when it was told to shut down, we shut down.
So Mr. Lee, the mandate from Judge Weatherby to raise your place, and DPS came in on land security, and San Angelo's police corps, that was under the name of LaHoya, who you saying that's not true?
It, it happened, but what was stated, whenever they closed down the first time, was that no cash should be given out. So we shut down, shut down for about six months, figured out what we could do, and we started giving out prizes. Then we started, one of our prizes was silver, and when they came in, they said that we can, this was also illegal, shut us down again. It wasn't of criminal activity or any such, it was, they didn't like what we were doing.
Well, they didn't, they didn't also, I mean, I can speak, they didn't charge.
Where do you identify, who, who, who's it, you're?
I'm Christopher Lee.
Who are you?
Joe Horgham.
What's your morals?
Joe Horgham. Yeah, they didn't charge anybody, which I had said last, in the last session, they didn't convict or charge anybody, so that's almost irrelevant, the whole case of shutting the store down, I mean, there wasn't any conviction, there wasn't any charges.
Well, we were told, if you were ordered to leave town, and if you didn't leave town and stop operating, they would have prosecuted you.
Leave town?
Not your business.
Your business, yeah.
If our business, yeah, we shut down as far as the, the frame of San Angelo. But that was, it, it was no different from the aspect of, were we doing something illegal to not doing something legal? They just thought something they didn't like.
No, that's not true. That's not what, that law force doesn't get involved, that don't like, that don't get involved in what violates the law. And the law, what they told us is, is that if you're operating, if you're giving away stuff, cash, that's illegal. If you're giving away items that are a lot cash, like silver, that's illegal. That's what they'll shut you down for.
So what are y'all gonna do, so here in the city of Bounder, the park gaming?
Well, so in the long, in years, I think, we have taken a vote first, and then we've already been looking into the other establishments, and we're gonna take action, if they're violating the law, then we'll take the same action as San Angelo. But we're not, we don't know if they violate the law, either, that's not, that's not what we're here today, so, and make sure all these establishments operate within the law.
I have a question. At what point was the giving out prizes, because it could be, you could sell anything for, for cash, how does it being one, one item being different than another? I'm not giving a dollar bill, I'm not giving a quarter, I'm not giving a check.
We're not gonna argue with you on all the iterations that it could be and couldn't be, as.
Or you're denying me the, the issue?
Based upon what you did in San Angelo. That's, that's as simple as it is. It does not meet another's criteria, and there are weaknesses based upon what.
Which, which ordinance?
Why is this the first game that y'all actually did background, you know, you know, the one prior to, like, did y'all, did y'all take the same steps, you know, towards the game required to the one that just, I mean, I, I, why is it okay for them to open and not for us to open?
Again, we're not.
They went through the, well, they went through the same, they went through the same, you know.
It's, uh, it's William Chester, correct?
Steps that we did.
I have a question.
What at a time is? Okay. Well, don't talk at a turn, don't talk at a turn, please, whichever's gonna speak. Well, I, you know, they went through the same steps that we did, so why did y'all allow him to open and not, and not us? I mean, I don't understand that. If, if y'all are using these, you know, terms to say, you're, you know, these deals for us not to open, like, why did y'all allow the last game to open, the one that came from San Angelo, when they went through something far different than us? It was far different, and we did the check on each individual, and we're not comparing it to anybody else, this is the information that we got back. You plainly stated, call the San Angelo Police Department and find out, this is what we did, we did exactly what you stated in the meeting for us to do, and this is the information we got back, so therefore it was denied based on that information. But when you checked. Plain and simple. Yes, sir, when we checked on that individual, though, you know, they had a conviction, I mean, they had charged, they weren't convicted, you know, allowed her to do, you know, they allowed her to operate, there's no convictions here. I mean, what, what are they?
It wasn't.
What is it that we did wrong against an?
This was not a conviction related to gambling. No. So anyway.
But what happens in place?
Stop. Any other questions, let's have the council vote.
I make a motion to deny the application for loyalty to operate a gaming, uh, machine disappearing down.
Got a second?
111, South Main.
Should I?
South Main, sorry.
All in favor, say aye. All right.
Can I make a statement, please?
Sure.
Now, for the last three months, I've had this process of trying to get this application through, and every two weeks, whenever you go off my council, y'all either not put me on the docket, or postpone this incident because somebody has not been here. And during that process, you decided to change the law. And during that process, you decided to change the laws.
This is the old ordinance. We're calling it the old ordinance. True. Being just used to old one, it's under the, they got issues before the one's changed.
Under the order, under the old ordinance, I don't see why he even had an issue towards opening the. He should have been able to open under the old ordinance. I didn't see anything wrong that he did. But, you know, that would allow him to open.
That's enough. We've heard it out, it's been done.
Well.
It's.
I mean, they said they were gonna do a background check on it.
That's right.
And that was it. Y'all did the background check, it came out.
All I know is this.
Those were different options.
All I know is this, I don't know if you yourself, Chester, you being a true city attorney, if this has been done ethically or legally. We will find out, we will find out. And if so, I will file suit.
Sure, absolutely.
I apologize for, uh, anything else. Y'all have yourselves a good day. Good luck to y'all.
All right, Council may amend the city's gaming ordinance, including the application. Y'all both have those in the packets as well. Maybe y'all had time to look over those.
And I would suggest on all, anytime we document ordinance, we can read the section of the ordinance. And have a motion to approve.
Are you ducking your highlight?
Let you see action.
That's what it says.
Yeah.
Okay.
If y'all leave your motion for the ordinance and the new application. Somebody needs to read it, I'll be glad to read it.
Go ahead.
An ordinance to the City Council with City of Bounder affects its amended chapter five. News that's of the City of Bounder current ordinances, amended definitions, amended location requirements, restrictions, police inspections, required security guards, licensing requirements, license fees, occupation taxes, providing rent party costs, providing penalty costs, providing severability costs, and providing for motivation and effective. And this also includes the news protection change provided as application.
Any questions? Concerns, comments?
Motion to approve each one individually or I just remove, I would move to approve the, um, amended ordinance and the new application. Seven, seven. You don't give me the option to.
You don't.
I'll make the motion to approve the amended ordinance and the new application for our gaming ordinance section.
In a second.
All papers say aye. Aye. Okay, I did. All right. That is all as far as the open session. We're getting ready to go back into another executive session concerning our water situation. All right, action in executive session, we're only doing agenda A. As far as City Council may approve a water supply contract, infrastructure agreement with the City of Athlete. I have a motion to accept both new agreements, infrastructure agreement and water agreement with the City of Athlete.
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Joining, all papers aye.
Aye.
All right. We do not have that back. For measure dual yet, right?
Right.
All right. Moving on to agenda 16, Bounder City Council, shall meet in executive session authorized by Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one dot zero seven, consultation of city attorney contract for the management hotel occupancy tax funds with Boundary Chamber of Commerce.